Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Air Select Board to order for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8, public access -- oh, sorry, the public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-9080-793 or by calling 929-2056099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air.mh.us or 978-772-8220, Accenture 100, prior to the meeting. I ask everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(affirmative)
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda for this evening?
I have none.
Okay. Excellent.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
And I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. The agenda is approved. On announcements, next Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, the town manager will hold a public budget forum on the first draft of the fiscal year 25 budget. It will begin at 6:00 PM. It will be held in person and via Zoom. Where is that going to be held in person? Is that going to be here?
Here.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here for public input this evening?
Hi. Thanks for hearing from me.
You're welcome.
Dennis Curran, Pleasant Street. So I just wanted to, at the start of the new year, kind of resurrect a topic which in the past has been one of my favorite topics or least favorite topics about enforcement and zoning enforcement and how that all plays out. I know that, I think that last year, the issue came up and specifically around dumpsters and there was some concern that the lines of authority between the Department of Public Health and zoning enforcement and the planning board were unclear or, you know, who's, you know, who's bailiwick that was to see to changes, if any, that ought to be done for that. So I'd like to ask that over the next year, sometime between now and October, that the various department heads be called together and either revise the bylaws in an effort to kind of more allow for stricter enforcement of certain concerns or decide that the bylaws are sufficient right now and that they can be enforced as is. And I, you know, on a case-by-case basis, I may not know which necessarily applies. And the reason that I think this is relevant to the board is that I know that you wrote a letter to Mass Development about noise coming off of them and that there was some concern, and two of the specific concerns were noise pollution and quality of life issues in that part of town due to the noise coming up. For me, who lives downtown, the quality of life concerns and the noise concerns for other things are far more relevant and far more pervasive. So, you know, in terms of the regulation of cottage companies who now can come and pick up their dumpsters anytime between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, anytime, Monday through Saturday. And there are, you know, dozen companies, maybe, I don't know exactly how many, but it's certainly more than one. So that, I think, is relevant. The other thing is that, and this happened in the spring, I went into Aubuchon and I mentioned that, oh, look, you have a new stockade fence surrounding the large bag products. And geez, why did that happen? Because now it's not quite so easy to pull up your car and grab it. The response I got, much to my surprise, is that the enforcement officer had visited them and had instructed them that that was a violation. And I'm assuming that's accurate and that's fine and they were brought into compliance and that's great. And then he mentioned to me, Riley, that, yeah, and the lot next door to us has two what look like light stanchions that have been rusting into the ground over the last 20 years, you know, in a weed-overgrown lot, and that enforcement action evidently hasn't been taken against that. You know, the lot across from Tiny's, I mean, there have been abandoned trailers sitting in that lot. There is a boat sitting in that lot for the last 15 to 20 years. And it--
It's a landmark now.
Yeah. So either that's permissible under the current bylaws and that's fine and no enforcement is allowed or, you know, won't gain you anything, which, to my way of thinking, is, you know, not great, or the bylaws need to be revised in order to allow for proper enforcement of that. Because that kind of visual pollution, that kind of old trailers rusting into the ground pollution does, in fact, affect the quality of life of everybody who has to drive by every day. So I think that evidently the planning board, DPH, and the enforcement departments might need to kind of call everybody together and figure out where they're going and either decide, we think this is okay. We, as a town, think it's okay for property owners to do that, or it is not okay. And if it's not okay, how are we going to act in order to make it clear to property owners that it's not okay? Because I think it's fair to say that over the last five years, property values have increased substantially, land values have increased substantially, landlords presumably have positive cash flow going on all their rental properties, et cetera. If we can't enforce to some minimum standard of quality now, we're never going to be able to do it. Because then it will be declining property values, don't have the cash flow to support it, there's nothing I can do about it. So I would just ask that the board use its good offices to kind of encourage over the next 10 months that the department heads be brought together and that some resolution -- and again, I understand that it will take public forums and that other people other than me will need to speak and perhaps property owners who are affected by this may say, I can't afford it or I don't want to see that happen or, you know, whatever. And that's all fine, you know, that's part of the public process. But I do think that more work needs to be done on the enforcement in order to kind of make the town visually, environmentally, more appealing and make each and every lot rise up to some minimum standard. And if you drive around town, I think that there's just far too many that fall well below it and have, over the last, you know, have been well below a minimum standard for more than a decade. So, I appreciate you taking the time to hear me.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else here for public input this evening? No. All right. Excellent. Thank you. Excuse me. First item on the agenda we have is Alicia Hershey, Community Development Program Manager.
Hello.
Good evening. Welcome.
Hello. Happy you guys.
Good. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So our office is getting ready to put in, to apply for the CDBG grant. We haven't had a CDBG grant since we had the COVID-1 of FY20. But the last one that we've done for housing rehab and our housing repair program, as I spoke in the memo, is over 22, probably close to 25 years old. And it's been a program that has helped many low-income homeowners to rehab their homes. And so that is one of the things that we will be applying for. We're having a public hearing on Thursday to talk to the community about other issues. But right now, what we feel very strongly is that is very much needed at this time, especially as we see the demographics in the town changing and people wanting to be able to stay here and afford to take care of their properties, you know, all levels of income people staying here and be able to afford taking care of their properties. But part of that application process is letting the Select Board know and asking for your approval and support in this effort.
All right.
Okay. Does anybody have questions?
No.
We've done this many times.
Yeah, we've done this many times. If you don't mind, just kind of for everyone at home, just kind of explain what the CDBG program does, just, you know, very high level.
It's a community development block grant program and it's actually a program that came out, and I should be able to do this. It's a 50-year-old program and it's to take care of low-income communities and slumming light in communities. And it's money that's been, is given through the federal government to help communities keep their housing and their community strong. So you can go in, we've done things like Pond Street and Oak Street and rehab those streets because they were in very contained neighborhoods that were low-income and we could prove that they were low-income. But we also, one of the big programs that we've always done and that the community development block grant does do, which is rehab homeowners' houses that are low-income. And they do get a grant for it. It is a lien on their property, which they have for 15 years. But it means that a senior who's staying in their house can put a furnace in or a roof on or new windows and, or we can take some light out of a house of a, you know, multifamily that has children and things like that. So it's just to help try and keep our low-income housing stock up to par.
Excellent. Thank you. That's a wonderful summary. I don't have any other questions?
I have no questions. So I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the FY24 CDBG grant application for the Air Housing Rehabilitation Program as discussed.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and you're going to have a public hearing this Thursday at 6:30?
Thank you. Yes, I am. I appreciate you being on top of that. And we'd love to hear from people, both their pros and cons or what we need in the future through these grant programs. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is everyone's favorite town clerk, Susan Copeland. Good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome.
Welcome. Can you hear me?
There'll be no living with you now.
Well, it's 2024 and it's going to be a real fun election year. So I just wanted to take time to start off a few things that I do need to take some votes to get things underway. So first, we have the announcement of our annual town election. I thought tonight would be the appropriate night since the warrant will be opened as well for the annual town meeting. So the annual town election will be held on Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then we have the offices that are listed. So I do technically need the chair to read that if you don't mind.
All right. The annual town election will be held on Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the second floor, Great Hall at One Main Street in Air Massachusetts. Nomination papers for the following offices are now available as they will appear on the ballot. Assessor, one three-year term. Board of Health, one three-year term. Commissioner of Trust Funds, one three-year term. Constable, one three-year term. Library Trustee, one three-year term. Park Commissioner, two three-year terms. Planning Board, two three-year terms. Regional School District Committee, one three-year term, and Select Board, one three-year term. Nomination papers can be requested from and submitted to the town clerk's office, One Main Street, Air Massachusetts, during regular business hours. Last day to request nomination papers is Friday, March 22nd, 2024, at 12:00 PM. Last day to submit nomination papers is Tuesday, March 26th, 2024, at 5:00 PM.
Yes. So just to note, the Air Housing Authority Board is a five-member board. It's a five-year term. It is not on this ballot because they do now have a governor-appointed position. So that is, this is the year where there is no, no one up for reelection on that board. So if anybody was looking, so that is why that is not listed. That's the only note.
All right. Thank you.
I had to say.
Okay. Do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, if you could, please.
Okay. I'll make a motion to open the nomination process for the annual town election offices to appear on the ballot as read by the chair.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. It's officially election season.
Wonderful. It's officially election season. So tomorrow at 8:00 AM, myself and Christina, the Assistant Town Clerk, we have the nomination papers ready. Let's just all be in orderly fashion and in a single line as we get everybody who's pulling papers.
Taylor Swift concert ticket.
Secondly, I come with the police detail at 2024 elections from myself and Brian Gill, Chief of Police. So within accordance with the Votes Act of 2022, it is required that the Select Board authorize the police chief to assign police details for elections in 2024. So this is that we need to have an actual police detail inside the polling location during the poll hours. So I've been working with Chief Gill and Deputy Chief Bigelow to ensure that we are in compliance. It is not for in-person early voting, it's only for the election days, the actual election days. So again, if you, I don't know if you have any questions or wanted to discuss?
I don't have any questions.
I don't mean to blaze through it.
No questions, James?
No.
Okay. I make a motion that the Select Board vote to authorize the Chief of Police to assign the following police details for the 2024 calendar year elections. Presidential primary, March 5th, 2024, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Annual town election, May 14th, 2024, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. State primary election, September 3rd, 2024, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. General election, November 5th, 2024, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. And just a few more items I just wanted to read. This is all being posted on the website. So it's on the town clerk's page and also on the homepage, there is an elections 2024 link that's going to have all the information for all the elections. So just a reminder about the last day to obtain nomination papers is Friday, March 22nd at 12:00 PM. And the last day to submit the nomination papers is March 26th at 5:00 PM. The last day to register to vote for the annual town meeting is Friday, April 12th at 5:00 PM. The last day to register to vote for the annual town election is Friday, May 3rd at 5:00 PM. And the last day to request an absentee ballot by mail will be Tuesday, May 7th at 5:00 PM. And the last day to request an absentee ballot in person for the annual town election will be Monday, May 13th at 12:00 PM. So a note about ballots, mail-in ballots, absentee ballots, that are also a part of the Votes Act. The Secretary of State's Office started mailing last week the postcards that became, that came with voting by mail. So the Secretary of State's Office is the ones that send that out to all voters listed. So last week, those started coming. I know a few people called me today with questions. So they're starting to hit everybody's mail. And it's listing all the elections for the year. So meaning the president, the primaries, state primary and general election. You can choose all elections, which would include our local election as well. So mail-in and absentee ballots are available for all elections in 2024. The in-person early voting, which I have started to put a schedule together, that will be for the state elections, meaning the presidential primary in March. We will have it again, the state primary in December, excuse me, September, and the general election in November. So I've already started to put information together to get on our website, get on our town calendar, so that everybody will know, as always, all the voting is taking place upstairs in the second floor in the Great Hall, just to minimize any confusion and to make it easier for all the voters. There is no in-person early voting for our local elections. We could opt in if we wanted to. We've never had the numbers for that. We do have more numbers for the mail-in ballots. So I feel comfortable as long as we're offering, and of course, Election Day. Election Day is always voting, so I don't want anybody to think that's not an option. So, but just to make a note also about the postcard mailings, again, those are from the state. That's from the Secretary of State's Office. That does not come from my office or my personal initiative. I do support it and I do work with them. I say that because sometimes I think folks forget who's reading the postcard. So if you have any objection or you don't necessarily agree with this type of voting, I would ask you to keep your comments to yourself or direct them directly to the Secretary of State, not to myself and the Assistant Town Clerk. We're the ones that have to read, unfortunately, receive some derogatory remarks and it's not our initiative.
Sorry about that.
So I just figured, since I was here, I would make that comment, but that's fine.
Any questions?
Yeah, please.
The annual, oh, sorry. So on the postcard, you said that if someone opted in to mail, to do mail-in for all the elections for this year, that would also include our local?
Yes.
So my question is, is the state then notifying you?
So I get the postcard.
Hey, you get a postcard?
I get the postcard delivered to the office. They mail them, but I do all the work with them.
That answered my question.
And Christina. So, and my team. So we do all the work with them.
Okay, so that's how you would know. Okay.
You can also request online, there's a link that, again, we'll have online that you can actually request your ballot, a mail-in ballot online. There's a whole link that you can do as well if you want to avoid paper. So lots of opportunities to vote. Get out and vote. Also in the mail, you should be receiving your annual street listing. I decided to work on that in-house to cut down on costs and to make it a little more efficient for our office. So, so far, so good. I utilized senior tax work-off folks so that they're able to get, to help with their taxes and we're able to save tax dollars. So I think it went very well. It's a lot, but they zipped right along, so it was really good. And I'm hoping that becomes more tradition, get more people involved in the process. So if anybody's interested, please let me know. We did put together a nice bright green, if we can see that, newsletter just about the importance of the street listing. We also included information about licensing your dog. It is that time to license the dogs. And Christina was able to create a QR code, which is very hip. It's very hip, Robert.
Very nice.
Zap it with your phone. And you drinks, links you right to our website to pay for your dog tag. So we've gotten a lot of great feedback on that, that people are able to just take care of it right then and there. It's the same, if you create your account, that you can pay water bills and permits and all that wonderful stuff. So that being said--
Do they type in their info for the--
Yep. So they can type in their info for their dog. We've been able to purchase the dog tags online for a couple of years. So you're just going to enter in the information for your pup. And again, if your rabies are up to date, we keep that record on file. But if we need an updated one, we reach out to the owners. But we have a pretty good system going that we've been keeping a log and keeping it updated. And when people go and bring their animals to have the updates, they get the information right into us. So just trying to make it quicker and easier for everyone. So, so far, so good. It's been working really well. So, and I also have the QR code at the counter, so, and just trying to encourage people to use the online payment system that we have and to see all the departments that they can link to and receive bills and taxes and everything. So it's been, it's been a good little PR piece for that.
Excellent.
Thank you, Christina, for my QR code. So as a reminder, with the dog tags, in October, at town meeting, we did vote some changes and there's an increase. So the fees are now $10 for neutered or spayed animals and $15 for our own natural friends. And we did bring the date up to the end of February. So by March 1st, you do need to have your animal licensed, which is about a month early, but it's trying to pull everything in and get it completed. You do get an extra day with leap year, so take advantage of that if you want to. But get it done because the late fee is up to $50. So we want to be sure, as well as any of our friends who are 70 and over, that tag is free. But we do need to have the dog licensed, so we need to make sure that we have updated rabies and your animal is licensed by March 1st, that you're still held to that deadline. So that was that on dog tags. And I think that's all my updates.
Are you sure?
For now.
Okay. Any questions, Collins?
No. I think I got all my questions answered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the votes and I will see everybody at the polls, oh, and tomorrow morning for your nomination papers.
Thank you. Up next, we have Dan Van Chalkwick, Director, Department of Public Works. Dan, welcome.
Hi. Good evening.
Evening. Happy New Year. Sorry. I've seen Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year. Yeah. So, excuse me. So on the Select Board items today, I have four of them. And the first one is the execution of a contract for pulpit rock drainage and pathway improvements. And so this was designed in-house. It's an outfall improvement and also a pathway improvement. I'm not sure everyone's familiar with the area, but it's between the community garden and sort of the Fletcher Street neighborhood. There's a pathway there with a small bridge, walking bridge. And there's some drainage issues there where runoff goes right into the pond. So this will treat the drainage but also create a pathway connecting to, to the community garden area from that neighborhood. So the town engineer did a good job putting this together and bidding it and we received 19 bids. It's probably the most general bids I've ever seen on a project. I've seen a lot of sub bids, but there was a lot. And the low bidder was $74,500 and that's Belco Landscaping from Salem, New Hampshire. And so they, we checked their references and experience and they are qualified to do the job, so.
Excellent.
Request a vote from the board to execute the contract.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions.
I'll make a motion that the board vote to execute the contract for the pulpit rock drainage and pathway improvements projects with Belco Landscaping of Salem, New Hampshire in the amount of $74,500 for signature by the board.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay. Okay, on to the second item. So this one is the award for spectacle pond filter media replacement. So the DPW in-house bid the project, so what we need to do is routinely, every eight or nine years, we have to replace what's called the greensand filter media. And we have that filter media, both Grove Pond and Spec Pond plants. We did Grove Pond in 2019 and Spec Pond was due in 2021. So we did get funds back at that timeframe and FY21, we appropriated it. However, the PFAS at Spec Pond and the PFAS project started, became a reality and started going on. So there wasn't much room on that tight site to do additional work, so we didn't want to move forward with our greensand work while the PFAS project was going on. So the project got pushed off. So then recently, this past late fall, we put the bids out, opened them on December 13th, and the bids came in with the low bidder of Winston Builders at $408,889. Our budget is, from funding that was appropriate, is $350,000. So we are short on budget. And so what I'm requesting from the board is to consider using ARPA funds at this time to supplement in order to complete this project. And it's really just, we've pushed it off for two years already and that's part of the reason the price is a little higher, because of the PFAS construction delay. And so, you know, we already have a bid ready and we could get the project going, but we just need that extra hump to get us, the extra funding to get us over the hump. We could, the other alternative is we could, you know, not do any ARPA and probably, and we request additional funds through the capital planning process and that would just push us back a year, which isn't advisable. Like, we probably could make it, but the life of the greensand is near its end. So the request would be for up to $100,000 in ARPA-- would be for up to $100,000 in ARPA. And the reason for that, that would give us a contingency of about a little over $40,000 is because the way the project works is, you, you, once you open the vessels up and take all the media out, then you see the internals. So these vessels have under drains. There's several small drains, and they have metal screens in them, and they've been there for eight years through all the water. So a lot of times, there's repairs needed to those. So you need some contingency to, to take care of that. So I think that was a pretty detailed overview of the request. If you have any questions, let me know. So, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
I was just going to say, I agree. We, we can't put this off.
No, I do too. I was just going to be, so $350,000 was already allocated for funding. The ARPA will bring it up to $450,000, and then we have the bid of $408,000, but there's contingency expenses possible.
Yeah.
I just want to lay everything out for the public. Thank you.
And good, can I just note that I checked with accounting today. There's $534,819 left in the ARPA that's been unauthorized. So just consider.
It's lower than I remembered. But that's okay. I couldn't remember. So.
All right. I'll make a motion that both, that the board votes authorize up to $100,000 of ARPA funds for spectacle, spectacle pond media filter replacement.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. I'll make a motion that the board vote to award the spectacle pond filter media replacement project to Winston Builders Corporation in the amount of $408,899.
Eight hundred eighty-nine.
Eight hundred eighty-nine thousand. Thank you.
Okay. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Okay, third item is our monthly water supply update. So thank you, Kimberly, for putting this together. She's on the Zoom. So since the last update, water production, it's pretty similar, facing challenges. On the weekends, we'll get some breaks at the two plants, especially with the holidays recently. Tank levels have been better, though. You can tell we're in winter demand. They've been near or at full on most days. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that's really helping is the industry is working with us to reduce their flows a little bit. So we're grateful for that. So at this time, that's where we're at. No changes recommended for water restrictions.
All right. Thank you. Any, any questions?
Okay, excellent. And the last item is a, an update on the Stormwater Utility Advisory Work Group. I don't know if we can, can I pull up the website, Carly? Can you? On the town website, just to show everybody? So we have a website, which is a repository with all the files. So while she's pulling that up, the Stormwater Utility Advisory Work Group began meeting back in September with monthly meetings. And the group is working on developing, evaluating a stormwater utility for the town of air, which includes evaluating a proposed rate structure and policy if there were to be a stormwater utility in air. And also, part of that is public outreach plan that the work group is putting together to get input and outreach to various stakeholders. So if you go, actually go to our committees, Stormwater, oh, there you go. Yep, that works. Does come from there.
One sec.
So the group, it's, I think we've discussed before, but it's comprised of several department professionals, town engineer, conservation agent, myself, financial manager. And we have three residents, one of which is on FinCom and one on planning board, select board members, select woman Livingston, and also a business member as well. So we're frequently updating the town website, which Carly has pulled up here with, or is a repository with all the information that is, is being presented and considered by the work group. So just if you need the latest, you can see we're meeting tomorrow, January 17th. There's an agenda here. So that's kind of without getting too much into substance, that's what the group's been up to. And kind of, that's sort of the next steps will be to keep coming at least monthly to the select board with updates, either through me, maybe some group members as well, as, as the push sort of goes forward, as we evaluate the stormwater utility. So the work group's going to continue tomorrow, and then another monthly meeting in February. And kind of the latest thing the work group's working on is, is a public outreach plan and, and also further evaluating a potential rate structure that would work. So, and right now, that the work group's kind of aiming, if this were to be something considered, aiming for fall town meeting. So it's kind of our way to get enough education out there and information to the public. So that's the, the brief update. So.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Bear with me for a moment. All right. Next item up on the agenda is the opening of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant for April 22nd, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Mr. Pomprenant.
Happy New Year and good evening. We're respectfully, it's that time of year, we're respectfully requesting that the board vote to officially open the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant to take place on April 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. There is a memo in your packet that was also copied to the town clerk and the town moderator. Just quickly for the public, the key benchmark deadlines. So with the opening of the warrant tonight, the deadline for all warrant articles will be noon on Friday, March 29th. That's also the deadline for all citizens petitions to the town clerk, again, noon, March 29th. The select board will meet to finalize and approve the warrant at your meeting on April 2nd at 6:00 PM. The warrant will be officially posted by April, Friday, April 5th, and sent for printing and mailing to all air households in advance of town meeting. And then, of course, the town meeting will take place on Monday, April 22nd at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, we do.
Okay. The one time that nothing was written. I'll make a motion that the select board open the annual town meeting warrant.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
All right.
And then moving on to the town manager's report. Mr. Pomprenant.
Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Happy New Year. Good evening. The warrants that were approved since the board last met on December 19th are in the packet. In terms of the updates, of course, all things are budget in town meeting preparation, which I'll get into in just a moment. But some non-budgetary updates since the board last met. A special thanks to the DPW for their ongoing snow operations tonight, as well as on the January 8th slash January 9th storm. The facilities department will be performing various renovations at Town Hall to the Great Hall in terms of meeting space, workspace, as well as the renovation of the mailroom on the first floor. That, this work will be ongoing from now until the beginning of March. Back in December, the facilities department also welcomed Mr. DJ Zoller as the new town custodian. The finance committee now has five members. Mr. Bob France and Mr. Eric Sekman recently were appointed to the FinCom by the moderator after the selection process had occurred. They also reorganized at their January 4th meeting. Kurt Friskowski remains as the chair. Andrew Sealy will now be the vice chair, and Eric Sekman will be the clerk. Also, at their January 4th meeting, they did approve the recent update to the financial policies, as did this board on December 19th. Their next meeting is going to be with the Air Shirley Regional School District on Thursday, January 18th at 6:00 PM in the Great Hall to further discuss when they had come down in November, to talk about the expiration of the ASRA grants and, and funding related to that. On January 4th, the finance manager, benefits and payroll manager and I met with Maya regarding the new health insurance implementation plan. Things are moving forward and on schedule for the transition to go into effect July 1st. The rate review committee met on January 9th with the consultants from Tie &amp; Bond regarding their operational and financial analysis of the transfer station. The consultants visited the transfer station on Saturday, December 30th to observe current operations. At the conclusion of their study and analysis, they'll be making a series of recommendations to the rate review committee, as well as a proposed rate model for further in future consideration by the select board. The Senior Center Site Selection and Building Committee met on January 11th to continue its review of town-owned parcels. The committee also authorized an RFP to general, for general professional architectural services with a deadline for eight, for February 2nd. Their next meeting will be on February 8th at 5:00 PM. I'm also pleased to report that I've, we've been developing a plan with IT and the town departments with the goal of having all town board and committee meetings offer a Zoom option for remote public participation and with complete implementation, but by July 1st at the latest. So that continues, many of the boards and committees continue to migrate to that. We believe it's, it's here to stay. We're still operating under the state's temporary measures on that, which it's only a matter of time, in my opinion, before it's codified. But we're trying to really promote the Zoom option specifically for public participation. We will have to train some boards and committee members on it. If, if I can do it without crashing the system, anybody can. But we do want to give till July 1st on that. Also, for the board's consideration, perhaps between now and, and town meeting, one of our, one of your future meetings, we could have both chiefs come. There've been several public safety promotions and public safety personnel, as we've done in the past, to have you and the public, you know, put the name with the face. So something to consider. Now on to the FY '25 Budget Process Update, which is also my second item, because in the new year, it's all things budget. So the budget process remains on schedule. Draft one of the budget was transmitted to the select board in the FinCom on January 12th in accordance with the budget calendar. It's available in the packet for this meeting, but also on the town's website, specifically the budget page, and upon request from the town manager's office during normal business hours. As you mentioned earlier, Mr. Chairman, and just to reiterate, mark your calendars, Wednesday, January 24th at 6:00 PM will be the public budget forum with the select board and finance committee. It'll be in the first floor meeting room here at Town Hall with, of course, a Zoom option for the public. The public's also invited to come down here. All town department heads will be in attendance. The meeting will be using draft one as the basis for the presentation. And looking at it, the finance manager and I will present draft one of the budget, which will include mini presentations on each of the major budget drivers. Answer any questions and take any input from the select board and FinCom. And most importantly, answer any questions and take any input from the public. And so I don't want to belabor the, the, the point where we'll have ample time on January 24th, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things about draft one tonight, which we'll get into more detail. I want to stress, as many know, that draft one is just that. It's a draft. It's a work in progress, and it's sort of the, the formal starting point of the omnibus development. Draft one is at $19,364,525. That's currently an increase of just over 1.4 million over the FY '24 budget, or an 8.09% increase. Note, last year, at this time, draft one for FY '24 came in at a 7% increase. We anticipate, obviously, as we work through the process, that number to come down. The major budget drivers are variables that we will talk about on the 24th, and I'm going to have the various department heads join me to hear from them with a couple of slides on each of them. One of the areas is information technology. There's a significant increase in that budget. We are actively working on revising that. What is driving that is, one, some significant changes to security requirements, cybersecurity requirements, cost for email. To meet those requirements, we had to go to the two-point authenticity for the emails. An email used to cost, didn't cost us anything. Now, each email account costs the town $3 per account for all personnel, board and committees. And we'll get more into this next Wednesday. And also, the transition in the future of the department. But you'll see a significant number that is, we're actively working on, on increase in IT. Also, the health insurance and the general insurances. The health insurance has a 15% placeholder, which represents the maximum exposure. We're increasingly confident as the process moves forward that that will be able to come, come down. Same with the general insurance lines. But we prepare at this point in the process for sort of the maximum exposure. So there's an opportunity there. The fire department, the expiration of the SAFRA grant for those four positions is upon us, and so we need to integrate that into the budget. So there's a significant cost. On the debt front, which Barbara will speak to on Wednesday, in addition to the debt, this year, the West Main Street Bridge and the pumper truck are hitting the, hitting the debt schedule. Draft one, at this point, doesn't include the contract costs for the police and dispatchers, of which negotiations are underway. There are also four personal service contracts, and it does not include the non-union COLA recommendation, which is generally done to this board in February. Inflationary costs continue to impact every budget, not just the municipal budget, but hopefully we'll begin to move out of that. We're actively reviewing and revising all of the town departmental budgets. And as in past years, we anticipate there to probably ultimately be about three drafts of the budget that's being draft one. Two areas of great concern for FY '25 that are somewhat out of our direct involvement are the Air Shirley Regional School District FY '25 School Assessment. As this board is aware, in November, the expiration of the ASRA grants on June 30th of 2024, which are the federal entitlement grants, are posing a significant challenge. Since the board last met, I understand that Dr. Renda and the school committee are doing their due diligence, but we're stressing that we can get as much information as to what that means in terms of the assessments sooner than when they come down here in February. Also, the Neshoba Valley Technical High School School Assessment, we anticipate, I've been told that it will increase. The good news, it's the least increase of all of the member towns. And they will have their budget breakfast on February 1st, of which the select board's invited, and the FinCom has also been invited. So on February 1st, they generally release all of their information. I'll stop there because Wednesday is going to be exciting enough on the 24th.
Yep. Janice?
A quick question. So I know you said that the Air Shirley Regional High School is going to visit the FinCom. Has Neshoba Tech set up, did they have a, a meeting scheduled with the FinCom yet?
They don't yet, but I will check with the chair of FinCom. I anticipate, and if this board would like to meet with Dr. Pigeon, I think anytime she would be willing to come, especially after February 1st.
Personally, I understand how the assessment works, so I don't feel I need that, but if there's any other changes.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I think it's great if they, if they show up to this board, but I think it's imperative that they show up at the, at the finance committee.
I will, I will communicate that to the chair of the FinCom, and he may already be scheduling something. I also want to point out, as discussed with the town moderator and the town clerk previously, and based on last, the last two annual town meetings, both the Air Shirley Regional School District and the Shova Valley Technical High School will be making brief presentations at town meeting on the budget. So that's clear. I think that will help town meeting and help the process. The capital planning process is just about complete with their recommendations. They have another meeting on January 18th at 5:00 PM to sort of just tighten things up. The rate review committee's next meeting is on January 23rd at 4:00 PM, where they will begin the water and sewer rate process and updating the models. And again, I just want to stress that the development of the budget is a process, leading up to town meeting on April 22nd. Again, all of the relevant information is going to be populated to the budget page. If folks need hard copies of that material, it's available during normal business hours through the town manager's office. And most importantly, if members of the public have any questions, they can call me directly or email me directly, or Ms. Antonellis. And contrary to- or email me directly, or Ms. Antonellis, and contrary to some opinion out there, I don't bite, we want to make sure that everybody's questions are answered and they have the information. So we look forward to the 24th. So with that, that concludes both item one, my administrative update, and the budget process update, unless there's questions from the board, and I have just one other brief scheduling issue.
I don't have any other questions. I haven't had a chance to really go through the budget in detail, but we have by-board this, is it this week?
Yeah.
So we can, I'll look at it before that. Thank you.
Okay. The last item we wanted to get on the agenda is the town clerk mentioned earlier, it's a big election here, and per the Secretary of State's office, town hall's a voting location, and there to be no public meetings during active voting. And the first time this is going to hit us, and it won't be the last time, but the first time is on Tuesday, March 5th. The first Tuesday is Super Tuesday, the, the presidential primary in Massachusetts. The board is scheduled right now to meet in March, on March 5th, and March 19th. There's no issue at this time with the 19th, but I don't, I know that Selectman Copeland isn't here this evening, but we wanted to get that on the radar screen, that the board should consider obviously rescheduling a different date or time for the first meeting in March.
I have a complete conflict until I, I, you can pick the 4th, you can pick the 6th, I have conflict, I'll be here on the 19th of March.
Okay. We'll wait for Sean to get back, and then we can, we can discuss and set a date at that point.
Okay. Perfect. So just wanted to get that on the, on the radar screen. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Next is new business, select board member questions. There's nothing on the agenda. Janice, do you have anything?
No.
Yeah, okay. I do just want to say, I've had the privilege of sitting on this table for 15 years and first as a member of the finance committee, and then as a member of the select board for almost six. Tonight, we open the 2024 Town Lick Start. My seat on the select board is up pre-election this year, and I will not be running pre-election. It's been a huge part of my life for so long, which is why, so. First, my career has become more complex over the years, and don't think I can give the level of effort that's required over the next three years from, for this position. And second, I've been heavily involved in our community for many years. Just to put it in perspective, my young kids used to come to finance committee meetings and play in the corner and read, and now my oldest has graduated college and my youngest two are graduating next year. I initially joined to help build a community for my kids, and I've had the privilege of doing that with some amazing people over the years, so.
Oh, crying.
So anyway, I was hoping not to get emotional, but that didn't happen, so. I still have three months and 29 days left, but who's counting? I'll continue to work hard as we finalize everything for town meeting, and I express my gratitude to everyone I've had the privilege of working with over the last 15, 16 years. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes.
May I say something?
Sure.
Okay.
Please.
I sort of anticipated you making this announcement tonight, so if I can just say a few words, if that is okay. I would like to thank you as a resident, a parent, employee, and possibly friend. You're a proud introvert that chose to move to Air with Heather and build your family. You rolled up your sleeves and became ingrained in your chosen community. Schools, sports, scouts, faith, positions, both appointed and elected, were all served with grace, poise, straightforward thinking, respect, and most of all, with integrity. There is a misconception that everything that comes before this board is just approved, and that is not true. You have held me and my colleagues with an understanding that progress was to be balanced, fiscally responsible, and fair to the taxpayers. Our research or reason was discussed, questioned, and an agreement was reached for the best decision for this town. In this current world of instant gratification and social media grandeur, we lose sight of the steady hands and quiet leadership that make the loudest impact. It isn't goodbye and not meant to be a final send-off, but too often, we forget to congratulate the victors publicly, whether they want it or not. My life and my family's lives are better due to your hard work. Your unwavering convictions and ability to humor my unpredictable behavior is always appreciated. Change is good. No one should remain in positions or seats for unlimited time. We speak of term limits on a national level, but if you want to change, you need to leave by example locally. It's the change of insight and vision that keeps the heart of our town alive and thriving. I'm hopeful whoever steps up and into this position is able to be as fair, respectful, and dedicated as you have been for over 20 years. The definition of integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong morals. The world needs more people like you, but I'll be satisfied to start within our own zip code. Thank you, Scott Hood, for all you've done for this town.
Thank you.
Here, here.
I did not know, I knew you were going to say this tonight, but I did not know we were going to need Kleenex tonight.
Need a bit of.
Okay, so I just want to make it clear, you, there's going to be a lot of box of Kleenex here on your very last meeting. Okay?
Okay.
Sitting in front of me, at least, because I know, well, I'll be better prepared that night to say some things that are nice.
It was meant to just simply be, I'm not running, but, thank you.
Stop crying, everybody. Oh, my God, I didn't bring any Kleenex.
Mr. Chair, the clerk couldn't, couldn't say it any better, so here, here to what the clerk said.
Yep, so I think you have.
Pauline?
Thank you, Scott, for recognizing me. I am holding thick tears. We did not agree on a lot of issues, but we agreed on even more. I wish you all the best.
Is she crying?
I think you've done a service on the finance committee and the selectmen. And while we may have disagreed, I do believe you did the best in your mind for the Town of Air, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Pauline. It's been a pleasure and honor to serve with everyone.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next up is the approval of meeting minutes for December 19th, 2023.
I saw nothing.
I didn't see anything. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We are in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
All right, everyone.